Good morning. It's 10:00 AM on June 7, 2022. I'm the Merkin Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors. I give our call to meeting to order, and I would ask you to join us if you would like to in pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we proceed with the agenda, I'd like to read a brief statement. Last Thursday, our community was devastated as we heard about the shooting in the Cornerstone Church in which three people died. Over the weekend, there are at least 10 additional shootings in our country. This morning, I also heard a report of a mass shooting in a church in Nigeria in which 50 died. I'd like to once again offer our condolences to all of the families and friends of the many victims. I also want to express our gratitude to our local law enforcement and first responders who responded so quickly, professionally, and compassionately to last Thursday's shooting. So many lives have been cut short by these census acts. Please join me in a moment of silence for victims' vote. Thank you. We'll go on then to adopting the agenda for today's meeting for motion to approve it.
So.
Is there a second? Okay, we can second any discussion. If not, all in favor.
I.
Basil?
I.
And I. Pardon me, I haven't done this for a while. Next, we have public comment number one. Comment creators for the public to address topics on today's agenda. And people in person can do that by coming forward to the table here. And if there's anybody online, I think you hit star nine to unmute yourself. Are there, is there anybody who wants to make a public comment at this time? Nobody moving forward, nobody on Zoom. I will post public comment number one. We'll go on to consideration of confirmation. Recognizing June 19, 2022, it's Juneteenth in Story County. I will start us out. Whereas on January 1, 1983, President Abraham Lincoln's emancipation proclamation went into effect, declaring 3.5 million enslaved African Americans in Confederate states to be free. And whereas on June 19, 1965, two and a half years after Lincoln signing the emancipation proclamation, Major General Gordon Ranger led Union soldiers into Galveston, Texas, to bring news that the Civil War had ended. And to read General Order Number Three, which stated that enslaved African American people were free and entitled to absolute equality of personal and property rights.
Whereas following his statement, June 19, Juneteenth became the emancipation date of those along, those long deprived of freedom. And whereas Juneteenth commemorates the strength and courage of African Americans, the contributions of African Americans to the building of American institutions, wealth, and innovations, and their ultimate triumph over extreme adversity. And whereas Juneteenth is a time for reflection and rejoicing, it is also a time for assessment of progress still needed. And.
Whereas the Story County Board of Supervisors acknowledges the shared history and commits itself to the principles of equity and justice. Now therefore be it resolved, we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim June 19, 2022, as Juneteenth in Story County, Iowa, and urge all citizens to recognize this day, participate in dialogue with one another about its significance, and collectively help further the promise of freedom and equality for all. I would move approval of the June 19, Juneteenth proclamation.
It moves in second to proclamation recognizing June 19, 2022 as Juneteenth. Be adopted. Any further discussion? Mary Nunn, Basil?
I.
Edens?
I.
Merkin, I. Adopted. We have another proclamation and a proclamation recognizing June 2022 as LGBTQIA Pride Month in Story County. Sister?
Whereas individuals who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, and their allies celebrate LGBTQIA Pride Month nationwide each year in the month of June. And whereas this month was chosen to commemorate the events that took place 50 years ago at the Stonewall Inn in Manhattan, New York on June 28, 1969, and is often viewed as the beginning of the modern LGBTQIA rights movement. And.
Whereas it is important during this month to take the time to reflect on the LGBTQIA rights movement. And whereas individuals who identify as LGBTQIA community in the United States, the state of Iowa and Story County have made and continue to make vital contributions to the world in every aspect. And whereas LGBTQIA Americans have achieved significant milestones, ensuring that future generations of people in the United States will enjoy a more equal and just society. And.
Whereas we will continue to advocate for the protection of all LGBTQIA individuals to make our country a place for all people, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression are truly, are treated with dignity and respect. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim June 2022 as LGBTQIA plus Pride Month in Story County, and encourage citizens to inspire equity, create alliances, celebrate diversity, and establish safe environments in our schools and communities throughout the county. I move the proclamation.
Second. It's been moved in second to adopt proclamation. Any discussion? If not, Edens?
I.
Basil?
I.
Merkin, I. Proclamation is adopted. Next, we, is agency reports. We have none. Next is consideration of minutes. Is there a motion to approve minutes of the May 31 meeting?
I would move approval of minutes from May 31, 2022.
Any discussion? Not. Basil?
I.
Edens?
I.
Merkin, I. Minutes are adopted. Next, we have personnel actions. Is there a motion?
I approve personnel actions as presented.
Second.
Okay, moving second. Any discussion? If not, Edens?
I.
Basil?
I.
Merkin, I. Next is consideration of claims.
I would move approval of claims.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Not. Basil?
I.
Edens?
I.
Claims are adopted. Next, we have consent agenda. There are several items on consent agenda. Does anybody want to pull any of the items for discussion? No? Supervisor, please. Okay.
I approve consent agenda items as presented.
Edens moves approval?
Second.
Second, okay. Edens?
I.
Basil?
I.
Merkin, I. Consent agenda is approved. And. Wasn't right to hear. Second, let me check. 13, now your gentleman got item 13.
Yeah.
Good morning, Mia.
Good morning. This is a second consideration of an ordinance, amending chapters 85, 91, 92, and 93 of our Code of Ordinances. You recommend it, approval as presented with two changes on first consideration. Those changes are on, in the agenda before you, are on the agenda as well as on the ordinance before you. So those include broadening language, under a standard for rezoning, to include any land use plan adopted as a component of our C2C plan, to ensure that there's conformance with our future land use plans from considering rezonings, and then also taking out any reference or use of the word handicap in the ordinance. And so that, those are the changes requested. I have not received any comments. And so we would recommend approval and second consideration and waiving third consideration.
Any questions?
Thank you for making the changes.
Yeah, I really appreciate your attention to that and making sure that we're using the correct.
And it wasn't just taking out the, the word handicap, it was changing it to just.
Yes, we did that. And we did that in the actual ordinance itself too, on the front page where we described. Yeah.
Okay, are there any questions from Mia? So this is the second consideration, and we can wait third probably.
Yep, we did publish.
Okay. From the show. Okay, so I'll open the public hearing. Thank you. Any comments from the public? Post public hearing and entertain a motion.
I would, I would move approval of ordinance 304, amending chapter 85.8, chapter 91, chapter 92, and chapter 93 on second consideration and waiving third consideration.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Basil?
I.
Edens?
Merkin, I.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for making those changes.
Yeah.
Okay. The next item. When I placed back on the agenda, it was regarding the request for funding for $50,000 from the owner of the Steppe Stones Childcare Center in Slater for development of a facility. And I, I kind of summarized in the attachment what we had done before and why I was bringing it back to the board. And what conditions had been discussed about that. Are there any questions?
That sounds like the. Loan option is off the table.
The loan option was off the table, even if it was, because they're getting an SBA loan, and even if it would be a loan that would have to be repaid, no more indebtedness was, was, would be considered by SBA. So basically, it, it simply became a, they need, you know, to finish it out to get it going. They need that financial assistance. And they're also working with the city of Slater. And Supervisor Basil, I think you received some information from Slater.
Yeah, the, the draft agreement that they were working on. With, with their requirements for funding.
And I believe that we probably do a similar type of contract with what we're doing with our, with other awardees.
Yeah, and I, I did talk to the, the owner of the business and did say that, and they were looking at what Slater was doing in terms of benchmarks, and we might just, if they adopt those, and they're, they're working on it, they haven't adopted it. We might put those similar benchmarks into our contract. And the impression I got was that was acceptable. So I don't have them in my, my memo because that got that afterwards. But I think they're doing some good work there, so it might be good to just look into that, so.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. There's no point in having the business owner have to juggle multiple different benchmarks.
Exactly, exactly. And she is, they're willing to look at the, the concept we call a pay it forward. You know, providing, that's in the, providing some free slots for people who can't, who don't have any other means but are in need of the services.
So looking at the concept or will do it?
Will do it.
I just see those as two, two different things.
Provider will pay it forward.
So that's what I thought, so.
Supervisor Merkin, I, I just want to recognize the work you put into making this possible. Seeing a need there in Slater and finding a way to help make that possible. Because I know we had a lot of questions at the beginning about whether this was doable. And I appreciate your creative thinking and finding a way to make, make that possible.
Well, I think it just came down to looking at the red code section. And sometimes it does that. You're looking at one and all of a sudden you say, but what's this over here? And actually, I will credit the State Auditor's Office because I looked at their site and they had some good information. So I think we all did our due diligence on this one. Because we know that there can be a, a concern, you know, putting public monies into a private business. But we looked at the greater good here. We looked at the need. You know, and we're, I think, fortunate to have, have the community health assessment, you know, to say, you know, this is a need, particularly a need in this community. So I think we, I think we've all looked at the information and did our due diligence, and I, I think that was important. I just know that the, the owner needs to get moving quickly. You know, she needs to, you know, she's been working on this for quite a while. So I didn't, I thought we could wait till Slater said, okay, they'll let you go through it. But I thought somebody needs to get this started. You know, so I think that we're in, we, we've done it. As I said, we've done our due diligence. We've looked at this, and so I think it's time to, my recommendation is that it's time to do it.
One question, and it may have been in our last meeting, and I just don't remember. So are they using as much as a match? I, I just, I just could not recall.
I don't think it's a match. I think it's just the money they're short.
Okay. But that was it. Okay, I couldn't, I couldn't remember from our, it's just a few weeks ago.
The money they can come up with with the SBA loan, everything else is just, but they were short.
Yeah, it was, it was originally, I believe, a $100,000 forgivable loan from Slater. And then the SBA said, no loan. So then she had this gap and she was trying to get that.
Thank you.
And you did a lot of it before I ever got involved with this. So I want to thank you for doing that, too. I think we, I think we all contributed to this, getting to this point. Are there any other questions or discussion?
I would approve the request for $50,000 for development of Steppe Stones Childcare Center in Slater and using the revenue loss and carbon revenue loss.
I would second.
Okay, it moved to second to that we funded $50,000, the source of funding being the ARPRO revenue loss. Any further discussion? If not, Edens?
I.
Basil?
I.
Merkin, I. Thank you. Next, we have department reports. Joby Brogdon, Facilities Management. Good morning, Joby.
Good morning, board. Orderly report time. Okay. I just have a couple of things that are additions to what's the document that's on the agenda. Start with our, you know, work order numbers are on call. Total was incorrect. It shows 42. It's actually 20 on call. Work orders were complete, so my math was off that day, I guess. Then some more general stuff that affects all of our locations. I did receive yesterday the cost estimates for the space needs assessment that we've been waiting on for about two and a half months at this point. So I've just started to review and make sure that they include everything that we discussed. And then, once I let them know that I feel that they've included everything, then we'll get a work session scheduled to kind of go over the, the final report. So that's good news. Yeah, so far it looks good. As far as capture and everything that we were hoping to get captured, so. But there's a lot of numbers to look at, so it'll take me a couple of days to go through it. Yeah, we currently have two maintenance tech positions open. That posting closes today at 5:00. Currently, we have three total applicants, two internal and one external. The, started measuring for the permanent front counters barrier project for this building. Total engineers, so that's just the, getting actual field measurements and getting the blueprints accurate. So and then once they get all that measuring done, the next step will be kind of meeting with everybody and going over what, what they'd like to see at the front counters. So that'll be coming up. Another good one to have. Moving forward. Talk about just center HVAC project. It's moving along. We've been seeing a lot of equipment delays. It's just nature of the beast right now. But we have, last week, we received another 35 pieces of equipment. So that brings us up to, we have onsite 77 of the total 101 pieces of HVAC equipment for the project. So we're starting to get a, they're getting a system down. Big thing is, is all those heat pumps are above the ceiling in all the areas there. So there's a lot of coordinating with people's offices.
Maybe I, yeah, when we don't have the rest of them. I didn't mean to make you laugh.
No, I know. It's, it's a good question. It's, right now, they're scheduled to be shipped the 23rd of July. But it's also been pushed out three times at this point. So I'm optimistic, but you know, there's some that, you know, because there's, there are two different manufacturers. The one manufacturer is yet to, it's Lennox, they have yet to ship anything. So, but that's the smallest. Now, there's only seven Lennox units that we have from the project. And they're the rooftop units, and they've yet to ship anything to us. So everywhere, hard to get components. They're behind from COVID. Everybody's still trying to catch up. So, and I'm sure that since the Lennox piece of it is only seven, seven units, they're probably filling a lot of their bigger orders that, you know, like our Climate Masters, the other company that has the heat pumps, which there was 86 of those. So they're the ones that we've gotten them in phases. Third shipment of them was last week, so we get about 30 at a time, so.
That happens to get it all in.
No, well, I mean, they've, they've, they've got, well, as of today, they got 17 of them. But like, in some cases, there's multiple units stacked on top of each other. But they've only got one of the three units that are included in that stack. So they can't really replace the one because it's in the middle. So they're waiting until the other ones come in. So we're still confirming which units came in last week to kind of start scheduling the next wave. So it's, it's creeping along, but it's getting there. Those are kind of the, just additions to what's already on there. Have any specific questions? Gladly answer them.
Your folks do great work. Just, yeah, a little bit of the modeling we had done at the board's office.
Yeah, they all do a great job.
And I'm also very pleased to see two and a half tons of old documents gone.
Yep. Yeah, it's a lot of, it's nice to get rid of it. We've actually got another big load that's old. Community life program case files that.
Oh, those ready to go now?
Yep, we got the majority of them. It was May that, that they came due, and then there's a handful that are July. So we've been keeping them for July of this year, so after July.
Be it for all of those?
Yep.
Oh, that'd be nice.
Yeah, that's a, oh, it's probably, if I was to, well, it's, it'll, it's 209 standard paper-sized boxes full, so.
Wow.
Be a good ton of paper. It's all in the basement of one of the group homes, so.
Really nice to be having this stuff gone.
Yep.
Clearly, as we're looking at, what are we going to do with space needs study?
Yeah, it really.
That tells us a lot more space we have available.
Yeah, it, it helps. You know, some of those types of documents that we got rid of are just, they're things that we have to keep, so we're always going to generate. But a lot of them are also just old documents from prior to everything being digital. It's just getting through all that stuff. Like, you know, we're working on it in our office, digitizing all of our old construction documents and getting rid of the the stuff. And we recycle what we can, but some of it is confidential, so it has to be destroyed, so. But yeah, it frees up. It's amazing what square footage we use just to store paper. Be nice moving forward. Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thanks, Joby.
You.
Upcoming agenda items. Do either of you have anything?
Nope.
We did have the report or the presentation from ISG regarding the carbon pipeline projects under request last week. I was hoping the pipeline group was going to meet and look at that and some other issues and bring some things forward, but we canceled our Friday meeting because it's going on. So I have not yet been able to schedule one. But it's, it's on, it's, you know, we should deal with a few issues soon, but we're just not ready yet. Because we have to get another meeting and get, get some things ready for the board. That's the only thing that I have. The most specific thing. So nothing else? Okay, go on to public comment number two. This is a time reserved for comments from the public on items that are not on this agenda. The board cannot take any action on comments due to requirements of the open meetings law, but may do so in the future. So with public comment number two, is there anybody either in the, in the boardroom or on, on Zoom with a comment? So either come forward or press star nine and unmute yourself. Seeing no one, I'll close public comment. And we'll go on to liaison assignments, meeting updates, and announcements from the supervisor. Supervisor Basil, I didn't mention where you were, so maybe you want to start and, and explain yourself.
Yeah, I am in Washington DC with the Ames Chamber and think about 24 people speaking with legislators and about priorities for Story County. I'll be here through Thursday evening, and then I will be back in the office on Friday. I've got several meetings Friday. And then I'll next, well, next Monday through Thursday, I will be back here in DC for the National Association of Counties Leadership Institute. And then I have a full schedule again Friday, that next Friday.
Okay, supervisor pens?
Sure, so I have a Board of Health meeting this afternoon, the third of the Urban Bridge meetings. Do you attending this afternoon? Tomorrow morning, I have a special Board of Meeting at 8:00 AM. And then I also have a child care lunch meeting that I'll be attending tomorrow. Thursday, I have all day workforce meeting from the CEO board that I'm on. I will cut out of that for a couple hours to partake in part two of the mental health summit, and then go back into the workforce meeting. And that workforce meeting is from 9:00 until 5:00. So a long day. I'll be in the office on Friday and also on Monday. And I will be reaching out on Thursday to Department head and other elected officials regarding KHOI radio updates. I want to send out an email regarding that.
I, I believe I'm going to be able to make Urban Bridge meeting at the floor plant today. And I'm then going to be off on some personal business for the next couple of days. If I'm, I'm back by Friday, I will be attending a vertical infrastructure meeting in Ankeny, and I will be back in the office on Monday. No other announcements? If not, then I will entertain motion for adjournment.
So.
Second.
Edens?
I.
Basil?
I.
Merkin, I. We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.